Are beautiful and safe and very heavily fortified with a number of different layers layers of security. And the people inside them feel safe and they manage to keep bad people out. So I don't want, particularly in Denville where my kids grew up and went to school, I don't want our schools to be prisons. I don't want them to be, but I'd love them to be like castles, right? They're beautiful buildings where the people inside feel safe and we add security measures to help that.
And going along with that, we also say that it's the number one priority of the district. You know, I know it might sound odd, some people might say, you know, I thought your number one priority would be reading or math, but our take on it is if you can't make everybody safe and secure, you can't, you can't provide an area for them to learn. And this is impacting kids. The things that are happening around the country is having, it's definitely having an impact on kids. I can speak to you about my own kids. One's a senior this year, one's in eighth grade, and these tragedies that are occurring around the country are having an effect on them. And anything we can do to try and help that is going to help when it's time to get kids to learn too. So it is the number one priority of the district for everyone in the district, not just for me. So one of the things that we do here is anything that has to do with school security and safety, we do it together. It's not, it's not Steve Forte doing something, it's not the chief doing something on his own. Everything's spoken about together. Anytime we put out a memo to the staff, like, please follow these things, this is important. Make sure when somebody comes to the door, you ask, who are you and why are you here? It comes from the chief and from the superintendent, not just one or the other. It, it, it shows that we're unified, we're just not, it's not really, it's not false, it's true, we are unified, we talk about all these things together. And it also gives people the sense that these decisions are being made for the best, the better of their children by the two of us.
And I think, I think tonight's a perfect example of that, right? Part of, and it's funny, it's not funny, it's interesting. One of the important things about school security is it's really everyone's business. It's not just the superintendent and I's job to do. It's not just the police department's job or just the school staff, it's the Board of Education staff, but it's also really every student and every parent and every staff member's responsibility to buy in. And, and one of the things we were missing is we had taken this show on the road to talk to other people about the great things that we're doing in Denville, and we hadn't discussed it locally with our parents and our staff and our students here, so that they had an opportunity, you know, they may not know some of the things that we're doing in the background. So tonight is an example of that. We're having a meeting in a week or so with a vendor, right? So I don't meet with vendors about school security independent, and Steve doesn't meet independent with vendors about, we meet collectively together with our combined staff and we look at something and go, what do you think? I don't know, what do you think? You think it's decent? Yeah, let's move forward on it. Let's meet, let's talk, let's, let's investigate this a little bit further. Is it something that you can work within the school and I think as good as a police officer or the, the chief of police? And if the answer's yes and yes, then we take a step forward and move together. And that's, that's just smart business, right? Collectively for the taxpayers, that makes good sense. For the students, it makes good sense, and for keeping the school safe, it makes good sense.
So our communications, we touched on that a little bit. We do, do our communications together, we do this presentation together. Everything we do is, is working to make sure the public feels that it's priority number one for us. We, we can't say it enough, we, we spend a great deal of resources, not just money, but time and energy, making sure that, that everybody's on board with this message, that it's not just, you know, the superintendent and the police chief. That if you, if you go to one of the schools, if, if Chief Wagner goes to one of the schools and doesn't have his key, knocks on the door, somebody just doesn't buzz him in. We, we, these are behavioral changes that we've, that we've instituted. So we, we talk about this a lot. There's so many vendors out there selling like the latest and greatest. I don't know if you saw that there was this thing that you could shove under a door for eighty dollars and it locks the door, but you know, the chief and I, and it's basically his thing, he's like, we already have a lock, why don't we just lock the door? Let's, let's start with that. So rather than going out and buying the latest and greatest, let's, let's look at the kinds of things that we can do that are behavioral changes. So a big part of our article had to do with things that are free that you could do to improve security in your building and are really just as important as any of the other pieces. When, when all these tragedies came out, people went and hired police officers, they went and, you know, put a bulletproof glass on it. Bulletproof glass will only work on a door if the door is locked. One of the things you're realizing is sometimes the doors aren't locked. So in our district, we, we make it happen. We actually, we actually spend time training our staff on making sure the doors are locked. Memos come out, discussions are had during, during professional development time about making sure the doors are locked, making sure that if someone does come that they're asked those two questions, who are you, why are you here? And not being, you know, it, it seems like you're not being nice to people when you don't unlock the door, when you see somebody carrying two boxes, but we're not going to. And I know, I know that sometimes people might think, when we, when I walk in and I close the door on you, I'm slamming the door in your face, I usually apologize when I'm doing it, but there's a reason for it. You have to buzz in, you have to be told, who are you and why are you here? And we've gotten the buy-in from the staff on this, and, and we've also pushed out this information, made sure that everybody knows that these are the things that we're going to require of our guests and our, and our staff.
And I think this is one of the things that's important for the public to think about and to know about, right? Like when you're, if you happen to be in the school one day and you're a parent for a, a, a homeroom party, or you're going to help in the lunchroom, or you're there on a Saturday or a Sunday or a Thursday night and you see a door propped open, pick up whatever it is that they're using to prop the door with, pick it up, take it, lock the door and throw whatever that was in a trash can, right? Don't just kick it outside the door because tomorrow night they're going to prop open the door with that same object all over again. Either if, now if it's valuable, take it, give it to the superintendent or the principal or somebody, right? But if it's a piece of wood or a rock, take it, throw it in a trash can, right? Or throw it in the river so that they can't prop it open again. But again, we need your help with that too, as a staff member, as a student, as a teacher, as a parent, right? When you're there and you see that, tell somebody about it, right? Or just lock it yourself, don't even wait, kick the door, lock, right? And if somebody's really getting back in the building, they'll find another way, there's another way to get back in.
And we have done things to make, we also realize that if you make security so difficult, people will tend not to do. So one of the things we realized was that if, if we're finding one door is propped all the time, you know, because it takes you a month to get around the building, you know, like Lakeview, it's a, it's a two mile walk to the front, why not put another key fob entrance in the back? You don't want all your doors open, you know, with the key fob, but instead of having two open, maybe a third one might actually solve the problem. And that's basically what we did to try to solve that problem, rather than, you know, eventually somebody's going to put a rock in if it's a two mile walk to the other side in the rain. So we, obviously I'm exaggerating, it's not two, it's like a mile and a half, but it's pretty far. Facilities trade, we can't say it enough about locking the doors in our, in our, and we also use something called Share 911, which is a, it's an app on your phone and on the website that is a communication tool. And our security vestibules, we're working on installing those, we moved them up and we have funding for security vestibules. The, one of the problems with the security vestibules, if you've noticed, they're not finished yet, and that has to do with the fact that the materials that are required in the, in the security vestibule are in high demand right now with all the things that are happening. But we've been told that they shouldn't be complete by, by December. And I know the chief wants to talk about Share 911 because he has some great stories about it.
Right, so we had, the school entered into an agreement, again, after a collective conversation, the Morris Hills Regional District and the Denville School District, for the Share 911 program. So it sits on an, an app on all of our police officers' phones, on our computers at work, on our computers in the cars, as well as on the computers at school and the teachers' phones if they choose to have it downloaded as well. I can speak for the cops and tell you that we had a, a question or two in the beginning about us putting a department app on a personal phone, right? We don't pay for phones for every member of the police department, but once we explained the reason behind it, the police officers gladly put it on there. So the app is designed, and, and again, this is where we're a little bit different than other districts. In our schools, we'll allow anyone in the school to order a lockdown of a school, any teacher, any staff member, anyone. If you see something that looks out of the ordinary, we don't want you to take the time to walk to the main office, try and find the principal if she or he is or is not there. We want you to just get on the phone, order a lockdown and lock the school down, and then let us come and determine whether it was dangerous or not. So last November, I was in a meeting with a couple of chiefs of police in the, in the police station building. And in a meeting like that, I will routinely silence my cell phone and turn off my police radio so that I can not be disturbed during the meeting. However, on my phone, my Share 911 app has a separate ringtone than all of my other ringtones. All my text messages and that come through on one ringtone. And I received that notification in the meeting, looked at my phone, and it said, lockdown, Lakeview School, person trying to get in the library from outside, right? I left the, left the meeting from the police station, flew to Lakeview School, which was in lockdown, right? And what had happened is the librarian was teaching and the library in Lakeview School has doors that enter and out into a kind of the wood line, and it was a cold rainy day like today, and a guy with a hooded sweatshirt and kind of beat up blue jeans came up to the double glass doors and started pulling on them feverishly while she was teaching in the school. So rather than second guess or wonder or worry, she called the lockdown. She called the lockdown, the principal, actually vice principal, went to the Share 911 app, locked the school down. That alerted the police, right, who immediately began to respond. Everyone gets a message at their desk in the school, all the teachers, there's a lockdown, there's a person by the library, so now you know about where it's happening, what's going on. And then with that app, we can talk back and forth, we can send messages back and forth, the teachers can check in with us. I'm Chris Wagner, I'm in the main office, and I've got Steve Forte and, and Wesley Sharplets are with me here, so that if Wesley's missing from some other classroom, we know that he's there. Had it not been for that Share 911 app, right, I would have just gone through that meeting and would have never known that there was an emergency in the school, but for having that app. So again, it's, it's a cost, right? But for me, that paid for itself for perpetuity, right? That, now we used it one time, right? Hopefully we'll never use it again. Wasn't, it turns out it was a painter for the school that wasn't supposed to go there to paint until after school, but showed up in the middle of the day instead, right? And that's, we talked to the staff after that, and, and the teacher was initially apologetic, and I said, listen, you did exactly what you were taught to do, right? Don't wait, don't second guess, don't let somebody in, lock down the school and let us come and determine if something's good or bad. It took us fifteen minutes, right? We let all the parents know afterwards, there was a lockdown, it was, we thought it might have been an emergency, turned out to be absolutely nothing, it was benign, everybody's fine, we're just going to go about our business. And again, communication between the two of us back and forth. So, so a lot of things that we do, when we travel, seriously, we have the same problem at home. If some of you were following the police department on social media, we're putting out that nine PM routine, right? Because we can't get people to lock their car doors at home, right? And then people are parking their brand new cars in their driveway with their key fobs in their cars, with their attache case, with their cell phone, their wallet, and their two computers for work, and some guy takes the train from Newark, gets off in Denville, walks up Parks Road, gets in your driveway, opens your car door, takes your car back to Newark and all your stuff with it, right? So it, just like locking your car door, we got to keep the, the school doors locked. It's so simple, and so many districts spend so much money and so much time on, on all these other things, but if you just walk up to the school, you just walk right in, right? It's just, it's, you got to start with that low hanging fruit that's really easy to get right away.
So we do, we do a lot of drills, we provide options. We feel very strongly that in our district, we want to provide options when there's a scenario, if there is a horrible scenario where you need to go with a lockdown, we need to give the teachers tools to make a decision, not to just lockdown. Lockdown's a great thing to do, but maybe there's something else that we want to do. And that model runs along with the run high fight type of thing, which is ours, our framework is Alice, but we like to call it common sense options. It's basically what, what we're giving people. And, and we always spend time drilling, we spend time professional development. As a matter of fact, our annual staff professional development for the entire district, we do, we do the ones for the builders, but we have the entire district, every year with the chief and I put together a program for our staff, is actually next Wednesday. And we, we come up with some type of a security thing each year. Sometimes it's along the behavioral side, like in other words, last year we brought in St. Clair's, and they trained our staff on the signs to look for when something might be wrong with a student that needs to go out for a threat assessment. We, we spent time on that with, with our St. Clair's partners. And we always evaluate and revise. It's not just, that's the way we do it, or let's just do it the same way forever. We always look at it, the chief and I and our team, we're always saying, you know, just even the other day, maybe we should look at this, maybe we should try that. We do have, we do go and meet with people and talk about different security things that might be good for us, but very often, very often it's not. You know, maybe, maybe out of the hundreds we look at things, maybe half of what we think are good and half aren't, but that's basically why we want to investigate and evaluate. We spend time and energy getting security audits, we've had a couple done here, we had some done before I got here, we had some done when I got here. And then what we did was we took the data from those security audits, the chief and I sat down, we prioritized the things we thought we should do. It's not like we just said, oh, we're going to do all this in one minute, we prioritize, we look at it, this is, this is for funding this time, then we're looking for the next time.
There, so we spend a lot of time on this, talking about this, and I spend a lot of time reflecting on it. About two or three weeks ago, and I shared this with a couple of people at work, there was a, I guess a podcast on NPR, and, and if you want to hear it, let me know individually and I'll, I'll try and get it sent to you again. I think it was called Before the Next One. It was an hour long, and the first half an hour was really interesting to me and really spoke to what we're talking about tonight. It was an interview of a couple of teachers from the Stoneman Douglas school shooting in February. And they talked to two or three different teachers that were in a couple of different perspectives. I think one teacher may have actually been shot in the shooting or had somebody in her classroom that was shot. And, and one of the things that they talked about, and one of the things that they liked was that they had a playbook, right? And that, and that it wasn't one thing, and it was the one thing that resonated because it's what's so important to Steve and I, and we were criticized for it for a little while about this options based run high fight, is these teachers said there was no one single answer for how to handle this, right? That the teachers felt confidence and their confidence level increased because they knew there were options in what they could do to handle a horrible situation. So if you're interested in, the second half of it dealt a lot with mental health stuff, with other victim families coming to help, victim families. Worth hearing, but the first half an hour was really reflective of the stuff that we were looking at, the things that we're talking about tonight. So one of the things that struck me was that it's so important to make sure that we go backwards to the beginning, reset, and then go to the end of where we're at today. Like every year, we have to make sure, did we get by the first day of school, did we get every new teacher? Because if the shooting happens on the first day of school, which is a paranoia day for me, right? The first day or two of school, if we didn't teach the teachers and our plan is to teach them at the first professional development, which is coming up next week, then we failed the teachers and we failed the students. So we have to reset backwards, that they all know the lockdown procedure. If you're a substitute tomorrow for the first day and you're in the classroom and all of a sudden you hear lockdown, 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 right? You can't call the office and go, what are we supposed to do, right? We have to make sure we've trained you at least thirty minutes before that day started, if not first day of school. So, so it's, it's, it's really critical and it's really important and it's difficult to get done, but we manage, we manage to get it done. Now, we're far from perfect, but we continue to assess what we're doing, right? Are we getting that done, right? Did we, did we hit the school bus drivers because they're important? Did we talk to them? The lunch aids know what we're doing. Do the homeroom moms know? And if they don't, then we reset backwards and move forward. So the preparedness piece is, is difficult. We train in the police department every summer at a different school for an active shooter, right? We bring in our entire police department over two different days in the summertime and as many contiguous town police departments that we can bring in. And, and we train in different buildings, we've even trained in, in St. Clair's properties so that we get different police officers in there and different scenarios, right? What, what, what's it going to sound like for a police officer running down a hallway with a gunfire in there? What's it going to be like stepping over somebody who was shot that's screaming for help but, but needing to go get the bad guy? So twice a year, right, or I'm sorry, once a year, the entire police department over two days. And again, big commitment, but critically important to our function and for our succeeding. And the Board of Education's been involved in that with us as well. Steve has been there for several, and as have other board members and teachers for those drills as well.
So our behavior health is a big part of this. Our HIV anti-bullying, we, we spent a lot of time on training the students and the staff on dealing with HIV and bullying. And we also have a strong threat assessment policy. I mean, if a student or staff member shows signs of having some kind of disturbance and it needs to be checked out, we have an amazing resource right in town with St. Clair's. Our, our, our people are sent to St. Clair's before they can come back to school, they have to be cleared. And now this year for the first time, we actually have one of the St. Clair's members, a licensed clinical social worker actually works in our middle school thirty hours a week, dealing with some of the children who are on the fence or are having some difficulty. Very often, some of the students may be somebody who did have to go out for a threat assessment that was brought back in and cleared, and now this person can check in with them and, and put together some kind of counseling program. Another thing that I spoke about a few times here was the, we, we do monitor the activity on our, on our account. So any student or staff member who is on a Denville account, everybody has to sign it, they understand it before they take it, on a Denville account or a Denville device, it's being monitored by something called GoGuardian. GoGuardian's looking for all kinds of things, but the things that we find the most, the most important and we want to know immediately are anybody searching for things that would be of harm to himself or others. Doesn't happen often, but when it does, we, we want to have, we want to get an alert immediately. One thing that we realized was our principal at the middle school happened to call me around eleven thirty, eleven o'clock on a Friday night saying, Steve, I just got this, this alert saying that a student was searching for how to harm someone. So we look up the phone number, we have the police, we look up the phone number and address the police corps into the house, and they, you know, stop the tragedy or it may have been a tragedy. So now we're realizing, wow, I mean, that's eleven o'clock on a Friday, we, we caught it, but what happens if it happens at two AM? Nobody pays attention to it because you're all sleeping. And then at six AM, we wake up and check our email and we find out that a tragedy occurred and we could have, we could have prevented. So we did put in a system of monitoring twenty-four hours a day through a third party, basically a business answering service, looks at our, at that one email, it's a special email, the address that goes to them, and it alerts us overnight. So I'm the first one, I get the call, then it goes down to six people on our staff, and then the seventh one is the police desk. The police desk is permitted for them to come to my house, just to walk away and get me and make sure that we can make sure that this child is safe. And for some reason I'm not there, there's another, if it asks another staff member, they can go and find out. And we, we were able to put this together for a cost of four hundred dollars. So it wasn't an exorbitant amount of money, and it was something that was really, something I felt like that was very important to us, especially since that one time on a Friday night, we just happened to catch it. What happens is we don't catch it the next time, so we really wanted to fill those gaps.
Can, if I may, tomorrow, the county sheriff is kicking off a training program on threat assessment for students. It's, it really was birthed out of a, an executive board meeting at the Morris County Chiefs of Police Association about a week after the Stoneman Douglas High School shooting, where we talked again about our frustration about, here's another shooting, here's another shooting, how do we get what the sheriff calls left of bang, right? How do we act before that even happens? There, then everybody always talks about, unfortunately, there's some, well, you know, we knew he was a little crazy, we knew she was searching things that were bad, we knew they were gathering guns, but no one did anything. How do we, how do we take advantage of that? So tomorrow, we'll be the first, I'm going to be there, I think you're going to be there as well, we have representatives from the School of Technology in Morris Falls. Matter of fact, I think Steve was the first registered of the class. The, the county has contracted, along with the UWASI region of the state, they gathered up around seventy-five or eighty thousand dollars to build a training program with the United States Secret Service and some threat assessors who actually wrote the, the, the report after the Virginia Tech shooting. These are experts in their field, and tomorrow they're, they're going to teach about eighty people over two days how to begin the threat assessment process. And, and, and we are going to be part of that. So that if a child just stands up in school and goes, I'm going to blow this place up, we can take that statement and then look at that statement with a list of scientific criteria put together by, by, by scientists, not by Steve and I, a bunch of cops and, and superintendents, and say, you know what, that kid's just having a bad day and he just said that. Or that child is exhibiting some psychological dysfunction, has some family problems, his grades are slipping, he's cutting himself, he's beginning to alienate himself from his friends, he's said some other things, and we go, boy, we've really got a problem and we need, if we don't have our hands on that kid, we need to ramp up at the security of the school. How will we do that collectively with other law enforcement partners and mental health people? And, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm really proud to say that the sheriff has used what we are doing in Denville as a, a, a test case for other towns to say, listen, if you really want to know how to get it done right, go talk to these guys in Denville because when they have a threat, they call the police, the police investigate the threat, we visit the house, we talk to the parents. If you have firearms, we ask to seize them, right? You don't have to give them to us, and if we think we need to, we'll get a warrant and take them away. And you can't come back to school until a, a professional says it's safe to go back to school. So I'm not smart enough and nor am I willing to, to put my head on the line to say, you know what, I think that kid's just having a bad day, blowing off some steam. So, so beginning tomorrow, you're going to see what we're doing in Morris County, you're going to see that travel to Florida and to California and to Michigan and to Idaho and to New England and, and, and a number of different states, and, and we're going to be on the map as really being ahead of, of the curve in stopping it. We've been fortunate in New Jersey that we've not suffered one of these horrible attacks, right? And so we're going to work harder to keep us on that left of bang.
And then, and then we put this strategically at the end because there are still some things that we didn't feel we could cover without some additional personnel. And the chief worked hard with our legislatures, as a matter of fact, I know Mr. Parisian was involved with this too, and I'm glad to see him in the audience tonight, that they pushed hard to get this class three special legislation through, and we were able to hire, with the police, with the police and the townships out, with the Board of Education, we have a class three officer in each school all the time. And we were able to do that because of this legislation, due to the fact that the cost is probably somewhere in the one-third range of a regular police officer, if we're going to put an SRO.
Even less.
Be even less than that. Meaning we could get three officers, three class threes for the price of one SRO. Now, and SRO does other things, they teach and they, they're involved. Our, our class threes are, are really security for our students and staff, that's their goal, that's their, that's their only job function is really providing security for our students and staff. They're not making arrests, they're not doing any of that stuff to our kids at school, they're there providing safety and security for our staff.
And, and so that's, that's the five of our officers. One of them is here today, our chief is here, he's a retired sergeant from Chad and Robert is assigned full-time at Morris Catholic High School. And, and we put that up there as again, it's a piece of the puzzle, but I'm not telling you that that's it, right? The, the cops in the schools are nice and locking the doors and having options, but I'm not going to stand here and lie to you, the police officer's not a guarantee that someone's not going to walk into school and target him or me first and then try to and then try to commit a violent act after they kill the cop. That might happen too. But I can tell you that having a police officer in that school acts as a deterrent, just like having a police department in your community acts as a deterrent to crime. Can't prevent everything. But again, it's a piece. Last week, I was, I was so proud to see, up at Lakeview School, a tweet from Lakeview School with Officer Krenz and a little boy from Lakeview School. Officer Krenz, when he works up at that school every day, this little boy walks by him and says to him, "Thank you for your service, Officer Krenz." And Lakeview has this pride thing going with their paw of pride. Is that what it's called? Paw of pride?
Lakeview pride.
Or, Lakeview pride. And Officer Krenz was waiting to give his little paw out, and he chose to give it to that little boy. And that, that just showed me that those cops are, they've already, in September, I covered November, three months, they've drilled down into that community, right? And there's a picture of Officer Krenz on his, on his knees, next to that little boy, giving him a hug, handing him that little, that little paw of pride. So, they're not, they're not there to do policing. They're there solely to protect those kids, and for people who might have been nervous, and I get it, right, it's unnatural for us to have to have a cop in our schools, but we're there. I was so proud and pleased to see that interaction between that little boy and that police officer in the school. That's what I wanted that to be, and that's what we envisioned it, and it seems as if that's what it's becoming. And again, one piece of the pie. Not any more important than locking the doors, or share 911, or bulletproof glass, or vestibules, or staff training, but important nonetheless.
And then, our last slide is just questions. Anybody, we'd like it if somebody had a question or comment or anything. We'll leave the microphone up here. Since it's a board meeting, we'll have to have you come up, right Mike?
Yeah.
Yeah. This is a public board meeting, so you just have to come up and state your name.
And then we'll give you the microphone.
It's being taped for our YouTube channel, so the microphone helps get the, get your comments.
On this mic or?
This one right here. Just say your name and your location.
And the voter case on Park Road, the mic is fine.
Okay, good.
Thank you very much. I just have a question. Talk about all the people in the school who have been trained, you know, from staff, students, you know, across the board. My question actually is regarding the after-school staff that is there from, I believe it's Lakeland Hills Y. What type of training do they have? Is there anything that you guys help them out with when people are picking up their kids after school? And I don't believe the SROs are there after school.
You don't want to rush them out?
Thanks.
So, our after-school program is run by Lakeland Hills Y MTA. And we do share all of our resources with them. We do not have an officer at the end of the day, but we do share our resources, and we do explain to them all the things that we do. We also require that the door be locked, and it has to have a buzzing mechanism or a person standing there to open the door. So, the doors may not be unlocked. They have to be locked. The person has to be, same thing, like buzzed in, explain who they are, and they come to the office. Now, the three, the two schools, Lakeview or River View, have a little bit of a different setup just due to the layout of the building. At River View, it's a buzzing thing, and at Lakeview, it's where the person actually opens the door and they're standing there. So, we don't, again, it's not, we don't have our personnel there all day, but we share all of that with them, and we talk to them all constantly about how important the security of our bellies are, and no matter what time of day it is. And also, another thing we do have is, because we have the enrichment program three days after school, our staff are there monitoring the door for the first hour of their time. And their training, they do have to go through training, the workers there, but their training is provided through Lakeland Hills Y MTA, not through, not through the district.
All right.
I just, sorry. Sorry. Okay. No, I only ask because, let's, maybe they need to be retrained a little bit, the folks from Lakeland Hills, because I go to pick my daughter up every day, almost, and usually a parent opens the door for me. And nobody, nobody challenges me, and I understand, you know, the level of security that we need to have in schools, for sure. And it's just, I've become accustomed to being challenged, any school I go into, whether it's to pick up my kids or for work. So, I'm just.
So, I couldn't agree with you more, and you may wanna talk about the afternoon Valley View security person too. So, after schools and weekends are a challenge for us, right? So, again, we continually kinda take small bites of this big elephant. Bite, chew, and swallow, right, one bite at a time. But at Morris Knowles, for instance, they have night school, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, with kids from all over the county that go to night school at Morris Knowles. They had an event there, an incident, let's call it, towards the end of last year, and I got a phone call from the superintendent up there that said, "Listen, what do I have to do to get a cop in the school every day after school from 3:00 to either 7:00 or 9:00 at night? Because we've got a cop from 7:00 to 3:00, and then we have all these other things going on, and then we don't have a cop." So, we entered into an agreement, the Rockaway Borough and Denville Police, and we have a guy, an officer, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, 3:00 to 9:00, Thursday, Friday, 3:00 to 7:00. And again, it's costly, right? So, there's a cost factor, there's a budgeting thing. That budget item that I hear and Steve hears, it becomes a fixed cost, right? It's not like you buy the locks today and you don't have to buy them next year. Not demeaning the fact that it's important. I hear you on the retraining. That's probably something that we can do pretty easily. And Steve and I can get together and talk about how we can tighten that up a little bit. That might just be that they just need a little bit of a reminder, or maybe more. But I appreciate you sharing that with us up here.
Yeah. Make sure I get your name and your number, your email address, so I can just follow up if you don't mind. If I can give you my card, your email, you might even have my email.
That's fine. We'll connect after.
All right, great, great.
Steve, you wanna talk about Valley View too?
Yeah, and at Valley View, the third school, we do have a security person sitting there. It's not, it's not an officer. It's a, basically a door monitor. And the reason being there is because there's athletics. So, we have a basketball game, and there's spectators coming in and out. So, it's difficult to monitor that. So, we have a person sitting there, and the door remains locked, and the person has to get up all the time and open up the door and let people in. It's a level of security, it might not be having the highest level, but it's better than just leaving the door open. We also have about half of our kids every day at Valley View in some kind of activity. About half of them are either in a club or a sport. So, it's a lot of kids, a lot of parents coming in and out. So, until 6:00 PM, we're responsible for the, for our kids until 6:00 AM. But, you know, we don't have anything, anything along the lines for when the PAL uses or anything like that. But these are all areas that we've talked about, to try to address sometime down the road. Again, going back to that whole thing, if you can't do anything, don't do anything. We're chipping away at it, and that's another thing.
One of the, one of the vendors we're meeting with early next month has a system, and the reason I like the system is it's similar to a fire alarm, and it's perfect for an after-school event, where if someone sees something, they can hit a lockdown button as they're running out the door or locking themselves in a classroom. It sends a message. There are all different, again, different layers of equipment that you can buy. But in a perfect world, you hit the button, it flashes blue lights in the school, it goes over to the loudspeaker, lockdown, 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 and immediately notifies the police that the lockdown button was just pushed at the main entrance to the council chambers in the municipal building on the south side of the building. And then we immediately can dispatch cars there. I like that because we've taught all of our staff and teachers and administrators to call the lockdown, and we've empowered them to make decisions, but we've not empowered a kid to. If a child's in the school on a Saturday for a PAL basketball game or Cub Scouts on a Tuesday night, and they see something going wrong, it's no different than a fire alarm. Why not let them press the button too? So, I'm kind of hoping that when we hear from that vendor, that that's something we can start talking about. Because again, it's a, we don't rely on a cell phone. We don't rely on somebody running down the office, finding a phone. You know, where, if you're in the school at night, you don't have access to a phone in the building. They're all locked in a classroom, right? But you'd have access to a button to get out that door, right? So, I kind of like that idea for immediate notification to the police.
There was a ballot question on the last election that Freedom, that is allowing the state to borrow half a billion dollars, a good portion of which will be used for school security. And that's one of the reasons why we're meeting with these vendors, so we can be ready to apply for the grants when they're, once they're available. And so, what we're looking to do is try to use some of those, some of the funds that are gonna be available, fund that, to fund some of these new ideas. Anybody else?
What's the distribution of the funds, do we know?
I don't know. I know, it's, that's the only one question, right?
Maybe we should go down there.
Yeah.
Sure they'd be happy to see you.
Yeah, they'd love to see you especially. They definitely wanna see you. So, Mr. Parisian's question was, what's the distribution of the funds, if you didn't hear that? And the vote passed for that money, and there is, there's no details. As a matter of fact, there's really not a lot of detail on how much of the $500 million is gonna go towards K-12 security. So, whatever it is though, I wanna be ready to take our piece of the pie as fast as we can before it's gone. Any other questions or comments?
Are the Class IIs inside your budget, or are they allowed to be outside the cap?
They have to be within the budget.
They didn't listen at all, did they?
No, no, so it's just, on a historical note, we went and begged the state to let us, John do the operational side, to do, to go, to use like capital funds to at least build into the budget. We were the only people at that budget hearing five years ago not asking for a penny. There were people asking for $10 million for the Railroad Museum, and hundreds of millions of dollars. And we started with, we're not here to ask for one penny. We're just gonna ask you to let us to shift money that we have already here, and we got nowhere. So, that's really frustrating, that we tried to do this years ago. But what we have now is, it's a, it's a, I think, a very workable solution. The fact that we have five of those officers working in five different schools here, I think speaks to that.
So, Mr. Parisian's question was, did they allow you to do this outside the cap? There's a 2% budget cap on how much you can grow your budget? And the question was, if you're gonna do some of these things for security, can you go outside the cap? The answer is no, but there is a way. The way is you can go to the public for a vote. On the, at the November, on the November election, there were several districts in New Jersey that did put out to a vote for the public to approve money to go over the 2% cap to allow the district to hire school security, and there were some for behavioral health. There's, you can go out easily for anything that's not needed, or that, not, I'm sorry, not that it's not needed, but not required, or something you already have. So, in other words, you can't say, "We're gonna put kindergarten for a vote," because you already have it, right? It's not required, you don't have to have it, but it's already something you have, so you can't go put that out to vote. And, but you can't put something like a roof, because if you don't, if they say no, you can't fix the roof, and now it's leaking, something like that. Any other questions? Good.
Dr. Parisian, talking to Spring Root. First of all, I want to thank you very much for your efforts here this evening and opening up this up to the public. Obviously, we enjoy hearing this or whatever, and we understand that communication is as important as it possibly can be. With regards to, one of the comments that I have heard in the, in the public is a concern around all the work, all the great work that you are doing, and that is, does this potentially make Denville any more of a target? Because we are doing the right things. You are sharing our best practices. You're letting the world know that we are on top of this. How do you respond to whether potentially this makes Denville more of a target than other communities?
So, I think we started tonight with, now, we've talked about a lot, and we could spend double the amount of time talking about more. So, there's no secret that school districts are tightening up security in their schools. There's no secret that we are putting police officers in schools all throughout the state. There's no secret that we're buying different technology. Their public ballot, or not necessarily their, their not ballot, their, their, it's all public information that anyone could have access to. I don't think that by discussing what we're doing, we're making us any less safe. On the contrary, I really believe that if somebody, in my business, we generally find crimes of opportunity where there's an opportunity, where it's going to be easier in one place than it is in another. And I would like the public to know, one, that we're doing a lot to keep your staff and your students safe in our schools, and secondly, that this isn't a good place for you to come and try this, because we're operating at a way higher level than most other places you could go and try this someplace else. But listen, the, what gets into somebody's head that even dreams of wanting to harm somebody in the first place, let alone somebody in a school, is unfathomable to me. So, to try and predict when they're going to do it or why, you know, I don't, I just don't know that we're ever gonna get there. But I don't think that us sharing with you so that you have an ideal. I think it's better for you to know and have some peace of mind that your children are safer now than they were five years ago. I think pays dividends compared to saying, "We're not gonna talk about this at all because I don't want anybody to know what we're doing." I just, I think you need to know that there's things in place, and there's layers and levels and training, and that we're in a really good place.
You know, I think, that's a great question, but I think one of the things you've always spoken about, which people should be acutely aware of, is you actually have to do it here. Maybe Parsippany does too. You always spoke about it. You've got Route 46, 287, 80, and 10. Easy egress routes, right? We're in the center of things here. It's easy to get away. It's not a pretty picture, and it's not a pretty thing to talk about, but you can get in here and get out of here pretty quickly, right?
Yeah, you know, the, so I'm in this 31 years, and I've got 31 years of history of what I know, and the 20 or 30 or 40 years I know before that from, from talking to the cops and learning from the cops before that. And what, what people do or don't know is that, that in the time I've worked here, we've had a couple of armed bank robberies, in the time I've worked here, right? I personally caught an armed bank robber that robbed the bank in Parsippany, but he ended up here in Denville. But we've had two since I've been here, and previous to that. There was an organized crime heist of an armored car in front of the Acme before I was a policeman here that wound up with, it was a violent organized crime. That our police officers have unfortunately been involved in two violent shooting encounters in the 11 years I've been the chief of police. So, we live in an awesome community. I live here, right? And I send my kids to school here, but no one is immune from anything. And we've had the misfortune, and my, but my drive in this is poor Michelle Gay from Newtown, Connecticut, whose first grade daughter Josephine was shot and murdered in a pile of first graders in Newtown, Connecticut. And she moved to Newtown, Connecticut because this sort of stuff doesn't happen here, right? And her husband is the chief anesthesiologist in some humongous hotel, or a hospital in Boston, and she's got an ED, an education, and that stuff doesn't happen to people like us, right? But Michelle said to me, "Do me a favor, and don't ever, ever, never let someone say that to you ever again, right? Never do that, right?" So, we've got to do it, and you need to know that we're doing this to make your kids safer. It's a, I hate the world that we live in when we have to talk about this kind of stuff, right? I don't like it, but you need to have a level of security or calm when you put your kid on that big yellow school bus, right? You need to know that we're working really hard to keep them safe, right? And I promise you that as long as I stand here and wear this badge on my chest, that I'm gonna keep working, and if I choose to slow down, he's gonna rumble over the top of me, right? Because he keeps me moving and moving and moving. So, it's a great partnership, and I'm proud of what we have collectively. We started with the three districts, the town and the police department and the school together. It only happens because of that. It really does.
So, a couple notes from a board perspective. First, I can say to John's question about the 2% cap, one of the things that I think we've been pretty proud of is the ability to do all these things, including the security vestibule within the budget. There are districts locally, town over, that went to referendum for security vestibules. So, it was important to them, but they didn't have it within their budget. So, I think that we identify and try So I think that we identify and try to prioritize things that are important. And one of the things that was important was security vestibules, Class 3 officers, as well as other things like shared 911 that we have invested in. Last month, myself along with two other board members went to a New Jersey School Board Convention down Atlantic City and I can tell you that school security was top on the agenda. I mean, it was by far the most amount of sessions to talk about something to do with school security. Um, it, it kind of took over what used to be technology probably, right, Steve, last couple of years. Um, and, and Chief Wagner, Mr. Forte were there presenting. Um, and I can tell you that I sat in about three or four of these presentations about different topics within security. And by far, and I try to go in very, um, not going in with a bias, but I can tell you that the way they present, the way they talk, people were coming up and asking them questions. It was common sense what we're doing here in Denville. It is common sense what they're doing. I mean, it's not really us, they're doing it every day. Um, it's common sense, but it also, it, it has a real meaning behind it. There was a lot of discussion over Class 2 versus Class 3 versus SROs versus security and, and, uh, you know, different ways you can get officers in. And when you hear Chief Wagner talk about why he thinks Class 3 officers from a financial perspective, which actually is probably the last thing on the list, to be honest with you, but really truly why a Class 3 versus a Class 2, it just makes sense. Um, so I appreciate what the two of them do every day. Um, the last thing I wanted to add was, um, a special thank you to our staff. We are asking teachers to do things that they were never trained to do and should never have to do. And having, they've been so open and, and I don't want to put words in your guys' mouth because you see it every day, but they are so open to understanding, they want to do the best for the students and keep the students safe. Um, so we are extremely lucky to have staff that have been very open to that. Down at school boards, when I was talking to other superintendents, other board members, their staff are not as open to this. I mean, don't want to put shared 911 on their phone because they're afraid they're going to be trapped or from some other crazy reason. Um, our staff has accepted it, has understood that this is the best thing for themselves and the students, and I truly appreciate what they do every day because like I said, they are, they went to school to be teachers, to teach little kids how to be, you know, great citizens, and they're being asked to do things that are above and beyond what they've never been asked to do. So I truly appreciate what they do every day and they're a part of that circle that we present and we talk about, the, the people that are involved with doing this, they're truly kind of in the center of it. So thank you for them also, but thank you for Chief and Mr. Forte.
Our pleasure.
Any other questions or comments? All right.
I will close this and thank you again, Chief and Mr. Forte, for everything. You're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the, uh, attendance. I'll try to sneak out, John.
I did, this comment, uh, when you're, uh, next 40, 710, uh, we definitely, uh, one portion of, uh, uh, the, uh, second, um, one of your search on the, uh, education officer, uh, Jeff Hill, uh, 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 staff, um, so he was, uh, he, he, uh, he recognized, uh, he said, uh, he, uh, he tried, uh, he tried to assess the situation while, uh, with his staff. Uh, he incorporated his personal experience, um, to, to, uh, 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 to.
Sandy, did you have any comments?
Hey, last time we, I had all my comments, we were saving them to you, man, so, so, I'll just let you.
So our first thing is our, an update on the progress of our projects. Not sure if you're by value, but the work on the new electric service has begun, it's being done, being done over there. And, uh, the vestibules are still moving, waiting for still a little bit of, some of the, uh, materials have not come in, but most of it has been in. We're still expecting to be done in December. And the basketball and air conditioning and everything at, at Valley of the Gym is all complete. Our CUSAC update, the DPR, which is, um, is a, basically a list of all the things we have to do to make sure we're ready for, for our, our audit, is on the agenda for the 10th of December and the state monitors will be on site on the 7th, 7th, on the 7th of January. We do have a resolution out here to outsource one bus route and it's, it's only due to the fact that we do not have enough staff to manage the buses due to a few recent departures in the department. And, um, one thing I thought about was I'd like to get out to the public information because this is something that we're planning on doing as of a week from Monday, most likely we're going to outsource a route. So I will put out a, a letter to the public, making sure everybody is aware that the bus that comes to pick up your kid will not, not all of them will say Denville on the side. Will you want a bus that says 100 County Education Services from the time being? We're hoping it'll be that. And by the time the letter goes out, we'll have that information so everybody realizes. Cause I, I started thinking like, you know, nobody's ever had a non-Denville bus pick up their kid during the day and I think it might be odd if, if one comes. I, I, and I put out a message to the, all the public, a couple, twice already, saying that we're looking at this and considering it. And I figured after it's approved tonight by the board, I'll put out something this week to make sure that everybody's aware that, um, starting next Monday, there, there is a chance that your child will be picked up by another bus. Our Hour of Code activities are starting next week, so we have several things planned. I saw Mr. Capello's name on a couple of lists, I saw you as a guest coder coming in. We got speakers and different people coming around. Hopefully we got Mrs. Nixon to come out and do some, uh, reporting on our, on our Hour of Code. I'm going to send you a press release tomorrow so you have some info. And, um, just for everybody else that's not aware of it, this is my fifth year here, so it's my fifth Hour of Code. It's something that we need really like a big event here. It's something to promote the whole idea of computer programming and coding. And we do it, we do it, different activities within the school. We have different speakers coming in, different guest coders. Uh, and we'd like to have, um, the, the TAP come in and do a story on that and hopefully on the media outlets as well. That's all next week. But for social media, it'll be more info on there. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Forte. Uh, we could certainly discuss it later, but I did want to just add on to your comments about the outsourcing of that one bus route, that, that is not, I guess, something that is at least desired from my perspective as one of seven, and I, I think I concede for most of the board that it's not something that's desired. We certainly want to maintain our buses, our bus drivers. Unfortunately, it's just a lack of personnel. So, um, we're trying to look at some other options and see if we can try to get some more personnel, but, um, it is, it is just the reality of the current situation we have, like we have talked about and Damaris has talked to the board about, it's not an issue that's exclusive to Denville. It's, uh, certainly a lack of bus drivers throughout the state. But we'll continue to look at some options and, um, just at this point, that's, that's the option we have to move forward. Um, at this point, it is 8:38 now, open for open public comments for anything. Anything remains to the district. Seeing no one coming forward, I will open, I will close, excuse me, open public comment section at 8:38 PM and move on to the agenda. This is Deluna, would you mind walking us through all business?
Sure, um, there's no objection. I'd like to read, uh, ask that items under all business A, B, and C be read as a block. A is the, uh, reports for October, trainer's school money, school secretary. B are the enrollment reports, the medical and the hip cases, uh, including nursing services plan, uh, and the district CUSAC team is defined in number five. Oh, and the two, the minutes, I was actually making, I have to stay from one, but it's still included as a block, right?
I'll check. Any questions, comments? Same number, please.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes, with the exception of minutes number two from October 22nd, as I was absent. Steve.
Mr. Lor?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes, with the, uh, well, I'd like to stay from number two of the minutes as well since I was absent.
Mr. Anderson?
Uh, yes, I need to abstain on the executive session number one on October 8th. Everything else is going to be yes.
Mr. Director Capello, if you're on with personnel.
Absolutely. There are objections under personnel. I would like to move items one through seven as a block. Uh, these include hires, resignation, retirements. We have, uh, some staffers moving across the guide instruction lanes, uh, they are being, being certified. Um, we have, we have hires, we have leave replacements, cashing resignation days. Uh, we're also going to be approving the list of holidays for 2019, 2020. The approval of the amendment to the show of services agreement for Denville Class 3 officers. Approving, uh, Steve as the position of law enforcement liaison and Amy Carter as the charter liaison for 2018 and 2019. Um, also approving the, uh, Steve's parable from the one, uh, which was a, it's pending, that is pending, that's correct.
Well, they have, and you approved it, I said, I said, approved not.
Okay, they haven't approved it yet.
They approved, you approved the object.
Uh, and then some, uh, leave of absence, I don't know, like.
Second.
Mr. Lor?
Okay, I think you got it.
Same number, please.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Lor?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Lor, if you're on with their structure program.
Certainly, I'd like to move items one through six as a block if there are no objections. Included under those are a, the list of field trip requests, uh, one workshop with expenses, uh, the 2019, 2020 district calendar, the 2018, 2019 district professional development plan. Uh, for, we were approving, uh, Cindy Costanza and Mr. Forte to attend tech expo in Atlantic City and that we approve the 2018, 2019 mentor plan.
Second.
I would like to, uh, point out that the mentor plan, um, has underwent a few last-minute revisions this afternoon, uh, thanks to Dr. Colless responding to my, uh, Deluna's comments. Uh, most of them were style, there were a couple of them, uh, rephrasing how the, uh, how the mentor mentee relationships would be referred to the board, bringing in line with our policy of the superintendent being the one who sets the, sets the, uh, agenda with, with the president.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Lor?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Cass, can you run us through policy?
Sure. I'd like to move that we had the policies listed here at number one. Uh, they're all, second reading adoption in September, number five, ready to be seven with service animals, which is here for the first reading. And on the, uh, next page, we have school security programs, school district security is first reviewed, so.
Any questions, comments on policy or opinions? Same number, roll call, please.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Lor?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna, remind me of the finance.
Sure, um, under letter D, finance, uh, no one objects, I'd like to move items one through five as a block. This includes the monthly checks for the mill and expenses, the, uh, ITA application for 2019, as well as the no child left behind application for 2019. Sale of 700 laptops and discard of the talent.
I'll check. Thank you, Mr. Cass. Any questions?
I just wanted to make a note that under number three, that in the revision, we were given an additional $9,000, so we're grateful to use that note.
What is the plan for the advertisement for the seven, the disposal of 700 laptops?
We have, uh, approximately 700 laptops that we have provided to the staff, uh, that are, um, useful in our updates and, uh, just needed to put a stupid tag in there.
But I think this, this question might be, how is that process going to be updated? How's the advertisement?
It's the advertisement paper and the, uh, ones.
Yeah, so it's like a sealed bid kind of thing, like we, we sold the property?
Okay. Thank you.
And in your folder, there's a list of every single one by serial number. So I'll add a series. There's that, I missed that.
Yeah, there's a tab.
I have a problem with this.
So that is, uh, for my own hierarchy, that, that's something we, we now have, that, that 700, we wouldn't, whether somebody had been a part of that, I'm just a mechanic or a mechanic.
We, we, they're at the hall.
It's one hall line.
Yes, and we have, uh, inspection day, uh, anybody who wants to come and start, uh, uh, we have two, they're at the hall, uh, sections.
It's very much like the opposite.
Well, that's fine, that's kind of.
Like you put out, like, you're going to do this work, but I pull the security vestiges. They're on all security vestiges. We had you, it's almost like, it's busy.
We had you, it's almost like, it's basically opposite that. But here's the stuff, tell them, show them here.
Right, then we have a reserve. Do we, in other words, like, it doesn't hit a minimum, we stay in that.
We don't have many of these things.
Then we can reject the bit, or the line.
I feel that it's.
You know, say, say it was so low, I'd rather see it, say, you know, tomorrow, just don't make this stuff for somebody who calls. Like we did with the rest of them, remember? There were little bits on it, we're just like, let's just go ahead and sell something.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Lor?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
No one, number one, yes on the others.
Mr. Kim?
Yes, but I'm staying from check six, two, one, three.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, but I'm staying on check six, two, and zero, two. And six, two, nine, four. As they're either to my place of business or potentially to my business. Oh, no, this is, okay. There wasn't anything on the convention, which is for, just for.
All right, Mrs. Clark is not here, so Mr. Cass, do you want to walk us through transportation?
You'd like to. I'd like to move under transportation, item A, the board approved outsourced one bus route to the Hunter Tenner Creation Service Division. Effective December third, and the amount of twenty-three eighty dollars, seven cents per day.
Second. Any other? Any questions, I didn't talk about this a little earlier, any other questions, comments?
Not just to kind of review, you know, not, not, not what we like to do, but.
I guess we could use this as a public service announcement on YouTube, that if you want to drive a bus in Bendville.
You should reach out.
Ask Forte, and, 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 please email. Give her training.
I just say I have a full C D L, I don't think you have a full C D L license.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call, please. All right.
Discuss this?
Yeah, we're not sure whether there may be an issue with our incorrect.
Yeah, we're trying, yeah.
So this is a program. If we approve this, we're basically saying, okay, we're going to try to. We don't know if we're actually going to be able to.
They, so they already said they're going to do it, but then we got a call today saying that we're trying to, we're going to hire a quick. So we're trying to, the driver they have quit, so we're still going down the road and trying to have a driver.
Even though we're not certain that they do?
No. I think we're pretty certain, but, you know, we're so.
The fact that they might have a driver is better than the fact that we don't have a driver.
Exactly, I think it might.
So we might, we might be rescinding, changing, changing, but, but you want to ask. So assuming now we're holding it up.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Lor?
Abstain.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I mean, what's the good cause? Any committee reports, correspondence, discussion items, other? Hold it all together, thank you.
I had discussion, sent an email out earlier in the week, last week. The New Jersey School Boards Association had a recognition program for, you know, charity organizations, foundations, et cetera, that helped schools out and, well, they done, the foundation of Bendville's been in operation for many years now. I don't know, we've got it, it's about seven years. And it does a lot for the schools. I thought they would be an actual cabinet, to, 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 to.
I agree.
We have until Thursday, December thirteenth, to submit the application. I didn't look at the application, it was in our, what's it called?
It's not, I looked at, there's, there's a, you know, question, answer, section, two page narrative. Excellent, two page narrative.
I mean, I think that our foundation should be pretty easy to write, just start back.
Who's going to do it? I'll, I'll take the lead on starting, put something together. I'll reach out to the foundation just to make sure, I think I've got a pretty good basis, but they can provide any details and then what I'll do is I'll send it out there, buddy. And if you guys have any feedback additions, feel free. I will give myself a goal of getting that, what'd you say, with due date?
December thirteenth.
Give myself a goal of getting that back by early next week, which will give us a week and a half to get it cleaned up.
Fair. Yeah, I'm sure they can provide the, you know, I can't, I have this whole things to come, over so many years, we've talked about. They have a lot of money.
Yep.
And a lot of things they've done for the schools, especially in the area of the technology area, there were a lot of smart board purchases. We started using smart boards in the district, so they've done a great job recently. Really nice that we could get the, you know, recognition to send that in, be careful of the, the top billing of the board.
Yep, I agree. Now, you agree as far as that?
And they've broken out by, by size too, to the perspective, so adding house and things.
Thank you, Cass. Any other discussion items?
I'd like to comment on my experience with the first CUSAC meeting that I sat in. It was quite the experience. I have never seen so much, how do I politically say this correctly? A lot of documents required, yeah. It's, I have to commend Steve, you, and everyone else's staff on how well organized everything was. I mean, talk about utilizing, what was it, Google Drive, right? To organize all the documents. I mean, every little regulation or state law that's required that you need to sign off on is, is shitproof. You must have had hundreds of folders that I, you probably have hundreds of folders that I use, right?
Yeah.
Basically, right, so I guess the one question is, the, I think the actual audit will take place in January.
January seventh.
January seventh. What percent complete, completion, like, is that something that the board can get an update? As I'm getting nearer to the January auditing, like ninety-five percent complete or eighty percent complete or? I don't want to put you on the spot.
No.
I apologize.
So your, the board has been approving some resolutions there.
Yeah.
Part of that, tonight we got a few on here.
Right.
We have some work coming up in December, yeah, and some of them, same. Now, I have to put a percentage on it right now, I have to say about eighty percent. I'm thinking by the, by this Friday, we should probably be like ninety percent as our next meeting. And then by the week, by the Friday prior to the December tenth meeting, that's our deadline. So when you approve the resolution on the tenth, it'll be one hundred percent complete, because that's eighty, ninety, a hundred in the next two weeks.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that, I thought it was just, I had a headache while I'm walking on that meeting with all the different people and.
I still have it.
So, yeah, kudos to everyone involved. I mean, just to be, even eighty percent done, you know, it's fabulous, so.
You know, the good news is, remember how we were probably playing about the fact that we had to take all of them, rename them all, and upload to this other website? We had to do that.
Oh, fantastic.
Huge, like, this menial task we had to do, about taking a hundred, two hundred documents, renaming them all, and uploading to this antiquated website. We're going to just be able, we're going to be able to share it by twenty eighteen.
That's great.
And I could pass it to them. Yes. Send them, like, smoke.
I don't know if it's a telegraph.
Kind of like the audit, they do, well. Any other good cause?
I attended the delegates assembly last weekend, there were actually a lot of issues to vote on. They had a representative from Senate President Sweeney's office and a former commissioner of the Department of Education. Spent a lot of time in the product review, a lot of questions. They were selling pretty hard this study they've done on unification or consolidation of school districts. This is something that they've, Senate President Sweeney's been focused on for the last year. They generated a white paper about it. There were a lot of questions about how, how it could work and what they were proposing. And they wrote that issues like how charter schools fit into the mix, and would you be forcing districts to consolidate with the districts that they're sending to? A lot of really good questions. And when I got out of it, it was that they've spent some time thinking about it. They're selling this pretty hard, but they haven't looked at a lot of details yet. So there's a lot of, from a cost point of view, they believe that there could be some cost benefits. They seem to be focused on districts that are really small. They kept giving examples of districts where you might have a K through eight and a couple hundred kids. Where, you know, when you get up to seventh, eighth grade, it just doesn't make sense, you know, the economics of it just, of course. Districts like us did become too much into the discussion. I brought up a question about if you were going to our high school district, how would that work for salary, salary guidance want to do? They said that they like to actually handle legislatively, that they could work something out, but they could be removed, or there could be a mechanism within that work. But they did seem, a little surprised even by that question. So again, they look at it in real large strokes of this, but they are selling it pretty hard. They're coming at that meeting saying, this is something we really believe is happening in the next few years. Districts can start thinking about it, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of things going to happen, so. I don't know if this is something that's just going to die in the water, but.
Is there, is there a correlation between the districts that are trying to consolidate and the districts who are also underfunded?
Uh, well, I mean, I'm not familiar with presentations or, I've lived a long time.
The reason I ask is because I looked at that when it first came out a month or two ago. And there were several districts that I recognized as also being on the underfunded list. Just wondering if this is a, if there's possibly some territorial rules behind it.
I'm not sure, I mean, typically the, the overfunded districts are the ones where the enrollment's down. So I didn't think it would be that, but I'm not sure.
I think inherently the overfunded districts were, you're right, the ones that they're rolling it down. But their enrollment was large in the beginning, so they're usually larger districts, and so they're bigger hit, right? So you look at like the Toms River, the, you know, Jersey City, East Orange, they have a lot of students to be in with. So a shift in enrollment has a dramatic effect either way. And I think the ones that saw increases in enrollment, the smaller districts have a bigger effect, I think. I mean, I'm just theorizing, but it seems to me when you look at the ones that were underfunded, it was rarely the large districts. But that's a very broad stroke that I don't know. I don't, it's a good question, I don't know if there's any direct correlation, or maybe indirectly, because of the demographics of it, maybe, or could be. Because you wouldn't naturally combine big districts, Jersey City's not going to combine with somebody else that are so big, right? Where Bendville's small, Chesterfield's small, the smaller districts, it might just inherently make more sense. And they may just be happy to be on a under, previously a lot of underfunded list, so.
It's something that's been going around for years. I gotta give you a little update on a few years ago, I think it was Governor Corzine, Mike Chris eliminated funds to study. I think he came about with one of them, so they would have to start with that, I think. Because there's, there's a piece of expense of studying how to do it, and trying to bring in, you know, weaker mining to go ahead. There's a lot of things.
And this was interesting, because when they started off by saying that they basically didn't bring all stakeholders together, they basically went off and did this research project on their own, without. Their argument was that, well, we don't want to have all of these stakeholders involved, we kind of muddy it up. We wanted to come up with an idea. And then we wanted to kind of open it up and look for funding to really to study it and then look at the whole, the implementation of it. Because a lot of people ask the question, you know, went off and you did the study, you didn't ask us, you didn't involve board members, you didn't involve school boards. But you kind of just went off and did it on your own. Their, their theory was, well, we did it on our own so we could get an understanding of what we're looking at. The other side of that, it kind of looks like a black box, from school boards, not, you know, it's kind of, you know. Come up with something, you can just tell them this is the way it's going to be. And they're saying, no, they're saying this is just kind of the beginning.
So they do have to deal with the underfunded menu.
Yes.
They, they say, the council wall that says, okay, all districts, all these fifty districts must study this. They're not allowed to study, which is fairly large a sum of money.
That was a lot of, a lot of the questions involved around that. And they haven't straight answered that, obviously, it wasn't like, oh, it'll be this. It's, yes, you're right, we, we, we have, will have to be helped. But it was interesting, it was, again, it was a good, a good conversation, a lot of back and forth. It's one of the longest ones I went through, we were done by twelve, we spun out until one more thirty. So a lot of questions, probably a lot of people, really, really interested in talking.
Bro.
Hey, that's not me, so, I, you know, it's Thanksgiving weekend, lots of tech before, hope you all have a nice weekend. As Fady would have, you know, I've spent a lot of time in Texas this year, and the first weeks of December, I'm going to be in Jersey, so it's safe. I know, I'm like, I said, when I got there. But I was trying to think something good that has happened, you know. I think you were here for my first meeting, like, we did, like, you all pretty much did. Dom's here for the first one, but my daughter's here for the, she's about to graduate college, so it is, you know what I mean? But I'm most proud of Blake and Gordon, and I like the team, and I feel like it's a better place than it was. I mean, I'm still, he's still here, I.
Thank you for your service.
December evening, and I apologize.
We, I think all of us up here know a small amount of the hours that go into kind of what we do. And Barb, you've been a tremendous resource for me. Your finance expertise over the last couple of years have really been relied upon for the budget process. Can't thank you enough for getting me up to speed when I started, and still getting me up to speed now, a few years later. And I hope you'll still be a resource so we can call and ask questions to and.
I'm sorry, y'all, because I was thinking, just about putting in context to get it where I'm comfortable now. My daughter wants to be a teacher, and I'm like, I'm comfortable where, it took three cycles, so. And you're going to be, you know, I feel good about the, I feel good about the, like, we're thinking, the, the balance is open, probably before you can have. You have to balance your, you know, like, what you're alluding to earlier, what's security and privacy issues and the executive session, I mean, the meeting, what the, you need to be mindful of that, that we are qualified, but I think, I'm pretty proud of where we're at, so. Thank you. I think you all may be a better employee, they finally all swear here as much as I do.
And Laura, I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss your scurrying status from new machines. The records you kept, the spreadsheets you kept, they're really thoroughly.
I, I think that's such, in some of this, we, I used the little Christmas sweater, she was a, she was.
Well, Barb, we've got a small token of our appreciation. Thank you, we're Damaris, our board.
Damaris is.
Thank you so much, really good.
Are you going to lead the committee?
No, I'll do the first two weeks after my presentation. Nashville, New Hampshire, and Austin. Yeah, I, I would say Austin. I feel a little urgent, just.
It does, well, your strap was, it's easy to watch YouTube on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barb.
Yeah, I'm going to start with you, consulting, this is for negotiation.